I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law and order, nation under God, in the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening at this time. Just like to acknowledge all board members are present. Do we have any announcements before we get into the agenda? See, none. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a review and approval of the minutes from our Board of Education meeting and executive session on February 12th, as well as the budget study session of last month. There's no questions. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no correspondence this evening, which brings us to our first public comments session of the evening. If anybody has any comments at this time, we'll have one later on. Any unfinished business from the board?
Do you have a comment, Mike?
Sorry? Nope.
Hi, my name's Michelle Panzer, and I have a son who is a senior, and my daughter is a recent graduate. I just wanted to thank everybody in the district and the board for the communication that I've seen as far as safety with the things that happened at the last meeting. I did review, I saw the meeting on, the taped meeting on the website, and I appreciate that being made available. And also the updates, I've watched for those and the letters that have come home. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of that and for supporting the kids with the upcoming march. Regardless of what side anyone's on, I appreciate the support of the kids and their, and their speaking up. I would like to, and I also saw that there's a task force being formed, which is great. Respectfully, I just want to say that I fear that a recommendation by June, I'm a little concerned between now and then. So I was just wondering what has, what steps have been taken in the last month? And what is coming up to improve safety in the schools, all of the schools and the district? And are there any extra security measures being taken for the walkout on Wednesday?
So let me go backward from your question. First of all, thanks for your comments. Yes, there are additional security measures that are being taken for the student walkout. Ken, we have, is it the troopers or the sheriffs?
We have troopers and sheriffs on campus in addition to higher security and our police staff could help with that.
So in addition, every time there's a tragedy like happened in Parkland, Florida, we take a look at our existing protocols, review everything with all of our staff. We're in the process of doing all of that one more time. There will be additional drills in every single one of the schools as well. So I'm very confident that all the measures that we have in place will maintain a safe and orderly environment. And then we'll go from there with the recommendations from the task force. You can follow all the work of the task force on the webpage. Okay? Any other comments at this time? Brings us back to unfinished business. Does any, any board member have a comment? All right, Dr. Hicks, superintendent's report?
First, I'm going to introduce Ken Smith, the principal at the high school, to introduce our students and our advisor, Kevin Starr, for the sleep out for the homeless. Go ahead, Ken. All right, well, we have one of the very best teachers in our school, in our district, at the high school, Mr. Kevin Starr. And I'd like to have him come over here because he works so closely with four of the very best students that we have. And he can introduce them because of the relationship that they have and the work that they do together. It's pretty outstanding, and I think it would mean more coming from him than from the building principals. Kevin?
Thank you, Ken. This is Allison Flagler. She's our student council president this year. Cassidy Elable is our treasurer. Elena Lopez is our secretary, and Matty Hosterman is our vice president. All of them were instrumental in the planning of this year's sleep out and in all the achievements that go along with it.
Well, I'd like to commend you. If I understand correctly, what's the grand total that's been raised over your tenure and involvement in this?
In the 28 years of the sleep out, our goal was to pass half a million dollars this year. And at this point, with still about 40 students to turn money in, we are at $502,000.
That is fantastic.
So we're very, very pleased. And we're just a little bit short of $20,000 for this year, and I'm sure we're going to get there.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
I know we have some certificates to recognize the students involved and yourself, if you please. Okay, congratulations to Kevin and the student council officers, and thank you very much. Next, is it community service next, Ken?
This was on the list.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So Ken, you're on again to describe your committee and introduce the people who are involved and provide your recommendations to the board.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for having us here. You'll recall that at the start of the school year, there was some conversation around community service. And our school improvement team was charged to review community service at the high school and make a recommendation, and we're ready to do that this evening. So the list of the community, school improvement team is in the presentation. We have our students, Bobby O'Brien, Cassidy Elable, Gillian Fedor, and Mike O'Brien. We have a couple of teachers, Mr. Radka, Mr. Vitello. Mr. Brooks served on this as he is the advisor for community service. And then the administration, Ms. Weiss, our parent rep, and Sandy Pavlock, the assistant to the main office. So the goal of our community service program really is to develop citizens that contribute to the betterment of our society and help those in need. And they contribute directly to the community in which they live. And during this process of providing community service, that they learn skills that are essential for the next phases of their life. For us, that's the big idea behind why we want kids to do community service. So before we get to the recommendation, this community service program has been in existence in this high school long before my time. And Mr. Brooks is going to take us a trip down memory lane with the history of community service here at Clarence High School.
Memory lane?
Yep.
Okay, we can do it. Thank you. So the community service program has been around for 24 years. And the first slide, I'll take you through what the board and just about everything that we do or the way it looks right now was all approved or mandated by the school board. And originally, it was 32 hours. Seniors started after they were taught what it was all about in September. They had to go out and find their own location. After they found it, they brought it back into the school, and their social studies teacher had to approve that that was okay. At which point, they could begin their work. They did it only at one location. That location supervisor agreed to evaluate them every single quarter, as did the teacher, and then they wrote a paper at the end. Some of those pieces are still around. They still write a paper at the end. They still do some evaluative form each quarter. And they still do 32 hours, but it very rapidly changed after that. What were the objectives? And I think everyone has the presentation in front of them, so you can read most of them, but there were some overriding themes. Number one, certainly to get students to take what they learn in their social studies classroom as a government class to be part of the policy solution for societal problems. Go out and see how that works in the community. So identify a problem, whatever that might be, you know? And then, how do we fix it? And it might not be government that fixes it all the time. It might be a non-government organization. It might be a nonprofit. Number of ways to fix societal problems. We don't always have to just turn to our local, state, or federal government to do it. Once we teach that, the idea was to have the kids go out and actually see it in action and see how it works, and that was the idea. In addition, it was to broaden their experiences and push the envelope a little bit so that they became involved. Intellectual and academic development were expected of the students. As you can go through these bullet points, you'll see that there's a big emphasis on skills. Interacting with other adults, working with customers, clients, those in need. Communication skills of all sorts, organization on where to time it, how to do their own schedule, how to plan things. We now have those skills back in the curriculum. And we do 38 skills for college and career as well as 10 skill sets. And we have already linked them, started, I think, a year ago, two years ago, linking them to community service experience. That we brought back in. This is a list of what was expected of the agencies. We need the cooperation of agencies. And so it was a little problematic in the beginning because the kids were the only people talking to the agency. And obviously, that's difficult for them because they didn't understand what the program is. That has since changed. Initial modification. Very quickly, it became evident that we had some problems. Organizational problems. We had students, hundreds, a couple hundred, going out and getting wherever they were able to go. That some had trouble finding a place. Some didn't know if the place that they went to would be approved. So they might go through one or two or three places before they actually got approval. Thus, they wouldn't start till October or November, and they had serious problems. There wasn't consistency between the teachers, just human nature. Teachers would do things differently within the classroom. And therefore, a community service coordinator was appointed. That person's job, and the first one was Mr. Jerry Capello, was to monitor seniors and only seniors. Up until that person, that each student got to 32 hours, then Mr. Capello verified it and signed them off for graduation. So that was pretty straightforward. In order to deal with the consistency and the approval, a list was generated. The idea of the list is that it's pre-approved. If a student works off the list, they really have absolutely no fears that their efforts will be counted and will be credited appropriately. So they can take the list and move on from there. It was agreed to by the school board at that point that that list should be published only on July 1st. Committee meets in June. We still do exactly the same thing. They meet in June. They review recommendations from students, parents, teachers, administrators, any agency that might contact us. If it fits both our idea of what we want the kids to do and it meets other requirements, for example, safety, they have to be safe. We have to make sure the kids are, you know, going to come back in one piece after their experience, then it gets put on the list. Once it's on the list, we don't, up until this point, we do not change the list until the following June. That way, all the kids have the same list and it stays consistent. The board reviewed and made the modifications that you see now, which I just went over. In addition, Mr. Capello felt that doing 32 hours all during the senior year was too taxing. And therefore, he recommended what you see in front of you, 15 hours of community service through school organizations, and then 17 hours off the list at the senior level. There was a, and it will get approved at that point, seniors, once you started your senior year, no matter where you were in that split, if you had not already done what we now call underclass hours, you did not have the right to do them. So when I took over, we might have some students that had done underclass hours and only had their seniors to do. And then we had students that had done absolutely zero underclass hours. Those kids had to do all 32 senior during their senior year, which was a bit of a problem. You can see the board reaction. They had several concerns, which they eventually will address. As to where the kids could work, what would count, how much of it would count. The board at that time made a point that no matter how much you work, an advisor or someone along those lines could assign a certain number of hours. And in fact, Mr. Starr just left. He's the best example. No matter how long a student works at raising money, they get three hours for the sleep out. So that was perfectly acceptable as far as the board was concerned. We'll go to the next slide. The approvals or the changes that you see in 1999 are in front of you. I think the only thing I want to highlight here is the overriding philosophy of that board and actually boards after that was expressed by Mr. Powers, is that they wanted students to broaden their experience. You know, get to a point where they're a little bit uncomfortable and try new things. And that was very important. The senior list was created. The kids would get that senior list right now. Of course, electronically, it's online, but most of them didn't get it until they got to school. And I think that runs down kind of what the criteria is all in one slide. Oh, that's a quote from Mr. Powers up there. I can't see too well at this late time, so my apologies. But, you know, he wants to, and he expressed it, every board member did, that they want them out of the school area. They want them off property. They want them meeting new people and having new experiences. Okay? Recent modifications. Since I, and I took over when Mr. Capello retired in 2003, we made some changes. First of all, myself, along with the principal at the time, Mr. Gentile, and superintendent, Dr. Casio, didn't want to discourage kids that would do more than 32 hours. So we instituted the Community Service with Distinction Award. That is 100 hours. 50 have to be senior off the senior list, and 50 can be at the underclass level. And we now count all of them. So even if a kid reaches 100, I keep going. So we have a couple of kids that are well in excess of 300 or 400 hours right now in the system. Two of them are approaching 1,000. And one of them is not even a senior yet, still an underclassman. So it has worked, and each year I do the total for the superintendent. Dr. Hicks has gotten it every year, and it's usually over 10,000 hours that a class will work. So that's a major change in our system. Current?
Is this me still?
Okay, okay, all right. Our current program, right now, this is where we're at. It's 16 hours senior, 16 hours underclass. I actually took away the arbitrary deadline in September for underclass hours. It just wasn't workable. I couldn't even explain it to a parent as to why we did it. And the date changed all the time. So right now, all our seniors have to work 32 hours, 16 of which must be senior. But they can continue doing the underclass during their senior year as well. It just made it a lot simpler and understandable. The Community Service with Distinction Award I just described, there are separate forms for underclass and senior, which are all online. The senior list continues to be in force, and it is also available online. It is reviewed every June. The start date for the seniors is July 1st at the conclusion of their junior year, so they could actually go out and start. The only problem we have with that is it, you know, they really, they don't always know why they're doing them. After all, this is a curriculum project, and it's in government class. So we have to tie that together once they get in. So far, we've been successful in doing that using the skill sets and the activities that we have at this point. Okay?
My name is Bobby, and as members of the school improvement team, Mike, Cassidy, Gillian, and myself, we were all responsible in representing the student opinion. And so as part of that, Mike and Gillian, in their Supa Public Affairs class, which is taught by Mr. Brooks, they developed a survey that went out to all the seniors, and I'm going to let them talk about it.
So the survey we sent out earlier in the year, and 88% of the senior class responded. It was a half sheet of paper that they just filled out anonymously and said their thoughts on community service, which they'll go over more thoroughly.
So on the student improvement team, we learned a lot of the players' views, and we also thought it might be important to start seeing how the students thought. So Jill and I created a five-question survey that was pretty simple, where most students just circled yes or no. If they started completing their community service yet, if they believe it had to be changed, and how they really felt about the senior list. So as you see, 88% responded, which is a great turnout for any survey. And 96%, which is usually higher than normal, say that they've completed some type of community service. So 73% of all respondents agreed that they felt that a portion of the hours should be completed directly within service with people in need, which is something that we do value. And then 54% do that people believe that it might be made difficult with homework and other jobs and everything. But then also, the other 46% didn't believe that this 32-hour system was taxing at all. So, and we also, for my module, for my group, we talked about how, you know, going to college, we thought it would be important for students to learn more skills for the future in the workplace. So 58% of the people believe that in high school, they acquired the skills that would help them in their future careers, which was a good statistic for us. So that was our survey.
So to the recommended changes, essentially, we'd like to, although there's a feeling that working directly with those in need would be beneficial to our students, there's difficulty in agencies and age groups and a lot of logistics that come into play that would probably make it a little bit more difficult for students to complete the service hour. So that's not part of our recommendation. We're essentially recommending that we continue the program that we have with a tweak to it. So we would say that seniors or students are still required to complete 32 hours to graduate from high school. 16 hours would be underclass. 16 would be senior hours during, completed during their senior year. That we would continue with this notion of a senior list that essentially gave recommendations to kids on where they could complete their hours. And that the hours completed at agencies on this list are guaranteed approval for seniors. And that students who had an event or an experience that they wanted to complete at a place that was not on the list could make a recommendation for hours to be approved, provided that they followed some guidelines and gave enough time so that the community service committee could review it and authorize it, should it meet the criteria that our senior agencies meet, to be added to the list. So that's where we stand. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them at this point in time. Sure.
So the senior list as it stands now, are you adding anything to that, or is it just going to be exactly the same? Are we adding, like, any of the PTOs or the organization rotary or any of the organizations in Clarence?
The senior list would stay as it is unless there were requests to be added. Because the way it works right now is agencies request to be added to the list, and we review those and add them.
Okay, I know of at least a couple of agencies that have applied this year, and some things basically August, September, and they still haven't heard one word either way. So are we going to improve on communication to those organizations? Or, one of them is like Victory Sports, for instance. He's asked me three times, am I sending it to the right person? So I'm just, I don't, if that's our process, the people that are applying aren't getting any response one way or another.
Okay, we haven't reviewed the applications for those who have applied. We usually do that in June and then update the list for July 1st.
Okay. I have one more question.
Sure.
So on the senior list, we have the youth board.
Okay.
But at the youth board, it's becoming more and more common that many of these, like, I have the calendar here, aren't covered under senior hours. So I guess my re-asked question is, if the youth board is on the community service list for seniors and it's approved, why are some of these activities, or 11 out of the 25, not allowed to be used for senior hours?
My understanding is that the Youth Bureau activities are all approved on the senior list.
Any activity or event that is a Youth Bureau activity or event is covered. That's fine. However, what we had a few years ago, and Don Kinney would back me up on this, you know, we talk constantly. There were some agencies or events or groups that were not on the senior list and could not be on the senior list for one reason or another, you know, not to be specific. So as a end around, they found out if they could hook up with the Youth Bureau, then they suddenly became senior hours. So for example, I'll give you a straightforward example of the bookstore, very nice bookstore, Monkey See, Monkey Do. That's a for-profit business. So they're not on the senior list. They're not going to be serviced. But the reading program, they got volunteers from the Youth Bureau to go to Monkey See, Monkey Do and do the reading program. Again, a great program. It just isn't what we do. And they were requesting senior hours. So in other words, an agency that would not qualify for the list can't become a qualifying agency simply because they partner with the Youth Bureau.
I guess I don't understand, because if the Youth Board, their activities are covered, then how can you say? Like, I don't, I guess I can't understand why, for instance, Project Linus Blankets, making blankets for homeless kids and is on there, that it's not allowed. Like, I don't.
Well, I don't do that calendar, so I might not be able to answer all your questions. That's Mrs. Kinney.
Okay, I mean, because there's like Salvation Army's on here. That, I mean, I don't understand how they can go to the library and play Legos with kids, but then they can't go to Children's Hospital or. It's becoming more and more of these. And I've been told that it's the school saying no. That's, I've talked to Don Kinney. I've asked, and it's the school saying no. So I have all these things where it says no senior hours, yet on our list is senior hours, is, it says that you can do it at the Youth Bureau. So that's my question. I mean, how are we deciding which of these on the Youth Bureau can and can't be used? And none of, most of these are not profit organizations. They're all the same activities. Some of our kids can go to the library and do, but then they can't go and tutor at Salvation Army after-school program. So that's, I just, I guess I don't understand that. Clarification?
If, again, I don't, I don't do that calendar. So the simple answer is that if it would qualify, if it's a Youth Bureau event that they create and they run, it's theirs. It's not the Salvation Army one. It's not some other group's one, because Youth Bureau does things at other agencies.
Right.
So if they do things at an other agency, and that other agency isn't on the list, then that's where it doesn't count.
Okay, so you're saying like they can do Youth Bureau activities because it's a youth word?
Yes, and this, by the way, this predates me. The Youth Bureau used to be the youth something or other down on Sheridan Drive here. I don't remember the name of it. Maybe some of you do. And they only did activities for kids at their property. That's all they ever did. And now the present Youth Bureau really grew a lot and does all sorts of other things, which is wonderful. But what was happening is the Salvation Army, at the Salvation Army's request, came off the list several years ago. Some things are not on the list because they don't want to be on the list. For example, the American Red Cross came off the list. They called. They were very adamant about it. They wanted off that day. Salvation Army came off. Goodwill came off the list. They came off the list, so now an activity that is housed there or for their benefit can't. can't suddenly go back on the list just because the Youth Bureau doesn't. That's the, that's the definition of what should happen. Now, there might be, there might be things that you're looking at that I wouldn't be aware of.
I just have a hard time believing that they can sort food for St. Luke's Mission, but then they can't like do another, like it doesn't, if you look at this.
What was the other one?
Um, I have to find it.
Did anybody talk to the Youth Bureau when they were, when you guys were reevaluating this? Were there any people, any providers on the committee that can provide guidance and insight into some of these things? Because I know that was one of the board objectives, was to consult with the providers as well as getting information from the students.
For this?
For this tip, yes, for this recommendation. Like, did anybody talk to the Youth Bureau about the calendar or about? It's our understanding from one of the meetings that the Youth Bureau does provide a great number of hours.
They do, they're fantastic, absolutely.
As you were making these new recommendations, did anybody reach out to the Youth Bureau and Don Kinney?
But they're only one of almost a hundred and forty outlets on that list, so no, we didn't include.
Provide the most hours to students. Because I know like part of the issue that has come back to us as board members is that there's not enough locations for students to get their hours. And that in the end, if they do wait, and I agree that they shouldn't wait, but they're going to wait. And we don't, they don't have opportunities or enough locations that will take them because you have to sign up in advance or there's qualifications, there's some where you need to apply in the beginning of the year. So it seems that there isn't.
The, the issue isn't the number of agencies. It, the issue is that every high school in New York, Western New York, has some sort of community service requirement. And when all of the kids in their senior year wait until May and June for the final push to get their hours done, that's when things dry up. They don't have an issue with, with the agencies. And everyone does something just a little bit different, which is the reason that we made this recommendation, that we have this list, we'll have, keep the list out there, but students can come to us at any point during the school year and say, hey, there's this event at this agency, here's the criteria, can I get approved for senior hours for that? And we'll review it and approve it. Because that opens up the door to give more opportunities for our kids to get their hours done.
Can I just, just to clarify?
Sure.
Something that was said earlier and then follow up on what you just said. So in regards to the Youth Bureau, if I just may reinforce what I, what I heard. If the Salvation, if an agency, and the Salvation Army was the example, partnered with the Youth Bureau and they wished, it would be incumbent upon them to solicit the district for inclusion on the list. And at that point, anything that they would do would be considered and potentially approved. But if they do not, so if the Youth Bureau, in this example, partners with an agency that may be very well-intentioned and probably qualify on their merits, but if they don't solicit it, they would not automatically be on, is that correct? And with regards to those types of circumstance, before getting to the students directly soliciting for a particular assignment, that is reviewed only once a year or are those reviewed? Is there an opportunity to review those throughout the year?
That's the modification, I think that's just what you referred to, right?
Yeah, okay. Historically, to this point, the senior list was reviewed annually in June. So recommendations that to be added to the list were reviewed in June. And if they met the criteria that we had listed in the presentation, then we would add them to the list.
Okay, so in the example, I think Victory Sports was named?
Yes.
As an example earlier, a question. Going forward, if that application was received, I believe it was mentioned in August, it would review, be reviewed at the next meeting day of the, of the committee?
Yes, we can actually call a committee meeting to review the, the application and then have it approved.
Okay, and I guess one item I was going to ask, just with regards to publishing the list July one. I know we try to encourage students to get activities, well, students try to get some hours in over the summer. Is, is there going to be any opportunity to review or to request additions to the list over the summer? Or is it July one and then we're going to have to wait till September one?
It'll depend on the availability of Mr. Brooks and a government teacher who serve on the committee. Administratively, we're here and we're available to review that. But the committee consists of the community service advisor and a government teacher as well. So if, if people are around over the summer, we can get them together and gladly meet and do that.
But it's fair to say that there's no guarantees, I guess. And there might be some time delay if somebody were to look to wait until the summer to request an addition.
Yes, my hope would be that events happening over the summer could be reviewed the previous June before they, before students go on break for the summer. That way, we can review them, get them shored up to go for their senior year starting July one.
So you talked about the process for adding new, new agencies and I think that that's good. I think doing it more than once a year is, is a good place to go. Looking at it from the other perspective, is there any review of the, of the agencies that are on the list? Because one of the challenges, and I'm sure that you're fully aware of this, one of the challenges is institutional memory. The people who made the arrangements with that particular agency three, four years ago might not still be there. You know, we would obviously act on a request from the agency to take them off the list, but are there any sort of annual or review process that we do with folks to make sure that they are aware of what their responsibilities are and they're still, you know, prepared to fulfill them?
Yeah, this past summer, we started calling all the agencies and finding out whether the contact person or contact information is correct and whether they were still accepting students to volunteer at their agency. And we plan to do that over the summer, going forward, each summer.
I just have one quick question. If the students make a request to be, have something added, you know, they want to do something that's not on the list, will you consider putting that on the list? If you, if you accept that, so if a student puts in he wants to be at this event or she wants to be in that group and you accept that for that student, will you attempt to add that to the list?
The, the original plan would be that on a student request, we, we would approve the event. If the agency that had the student wanted to be added permanently, well, annually to our list, then we would encourage the agency to go through the process of the application.
So if a student makes that application, will we reach out to that agency and say, we're, we're accepting it for this student? Are you interested in being on the list or are we going to just see?
We could do that.
You would reach out?
Yes, we can do that, yep.
The last comment from me is as we are making those judgment calls, both on a case-by-case basis and when an agency says, hey, we'd like to be on this list, I think we should be, just make sure that the criterion is well-understood and documented. Because we don't want to get into situations where there's ambiguity or at least a perception of ambiguity in those, in that situation.
Agreed.
I did find that one thing, it's Sierra Leone, like you can't, like, we can't go to there, like sort food for Africa, but you can sort food for people in Buffalo. So that's, there's two places on here, like Helping Hands Pantry we can do, but the one that sorts it for Sierra Leone, that's why I, that's why I don't understand this whole, like the concept of this.
Is there a set criteria that is used by the teachers that make this and is there, who does it? I know you said Mr. Brooks does it, but is it all the social studies teachers? Or is it just one, is there a committee that?
All the government teachers. Anyone who teaches government or is, is about to teach it, I mean, we don't really know who's going to teach from year to year. All food pantries are approved on the senior list, right at the top of the senior list. Again, I don't do, I don't do the Youth Bureau's calendar. I have no idea why it says no, no for Sierra Leone and yes for something else. But right on the top of the senior list, all food pantries. So it can be St. Luke's Mission, it can be the church next door. We have, Clara Spears did all her work right there. She just walked across the parking lot and worked right there. All hospitals, those were additions I made. When I took over, there were thirty-eight places to go.
So all hospitals?
For the entire senior class, thirty-eight. Now we are at over one hundred and fifty outlets.
So all hospitals are also?
All hospitals if, all, all Western New York hospitals, so long as they go through the volunteer coordinator's office. And that is something the hospitals mandate. We had a number of students the first year because they knew a neighbor or had a family friend would go along into the hospital and be doing things. And quite honestly, the reason it's that way is because the hospitals called me and went berserk. They can't have people wandering around the hospital without having been trained and vetted and on their registration as a volunteer. So they're very strict about that. And that's why the, you know, you have to work through the volunteer director's office for the, for the student safety, for liability issue, you know, and, and obviously security nowadays.
Right, so you have a good point there, but then if you look where, like I said, going back to the youth board, Children's Hospital where you go and work with crafts for kids is not allowed under senior hours. So that's where I have this problem that I'm like, okay, you're saying?
Because we're dealing directly with Children's Hospital, they have to go through the volunteer.
Right.
If a student volunteers with the Youth Bureau, I'm assuming the town of Clarence has made that situation safe for the kids. They're the ones doing it, not, not us.
So then why wouldn't that be allowed under senior hours then?
Because we have an arrangement with the hospitals, they have to go through the volunteer coordinator's office. It's for seniors to work with patients, doctors, medical staff, things like that. And, and of course, for the safety of the students and for liability issues, they have to be under supervision all the time.
From a process perspective, maybe, and my daughter may be running into this very soon. So she's going to be a senior next year and I'll be living this a little more closely than others have in the past. Is, is there an introduction to the students as they finish their junior year to prepare them for what is required? Or, you know, how, how are they made aware of all the requirements and the nuances?
Sure, sure. Every year in the class meetings, we orient the students, starting with ninth grade. And then I pay visits to the classes. This year, we're actually going to do a little bit more. We're going to do a, and last year, we did a presentation. There was a PowerPoint I sent out to all the social studies teachers and they used it in the class as best I can, because obviously I have my own classes to teach, I'm up and down the halls, and I witnessed them actually do it. They were up there and Dr. Cotlitt did it all his periods. It was on the screen, he talked about it for a considerable amount of time and fielded a bunch of questions. So they do it, then I push into the classes and I talk to them. And I'm going to make sure I do that again this year with the eleventh grade to prepare them and let them know what they're doing. The other things we've done, of course, are the quarterly assignments. So technically, this is, this is the schedule. Marking period one, all, all twelfth graders have an assignment that is graded, that is sixteen, sixteen hours of work. So that should be done. Marking period two, eight senior hours. Marking period three, an additional eight senior hours. So quite honestly, it's spread out and everything should be done at the end of this marking period, which would be April twentieth, ten days before the due date. That's our hope.
Also, can, is there any, I know that there, I've heard that there have been some opportunities where the school provides transportation to go to senior hours, is that going to continue?
Yes, Mr. Smith and I did that. We organized that to try to get the kids out there. We do it whenever there's a day. For example, I think the first year we did it was in October, it was an October test day. And all the seniors, that one, yeah. The seniors didn't have any classes. So I, I, you know, we had this idea, what if we got a couple of buses? And went and ripped up a house for Habitat. So we did. It was great, you know, but again, it has to be on a day when we, we're not going to pull them out of class, obviously, no, so.
They can't get hours, right? That they have, it has to be after-school hours to get service hours.
Well, it's after their, their, their school. So, you know, we have kids that dismiss it at one sixteen, they're on the job at one thirty. We did it once this year, yes, we went to the food bank and quite amazingly broke the record for the number of pallets loaded by two boxes. So it was still a broken record and I think we're planning it again, so.
Ken, could you quickly explain, or Mr. Brooks, quickly explain how all of these hours for every kid at the high school is maintained and documented?
Yep, we use our student management system, Power School, to document the hours completed by students. We started this year, hadn't been done previously, but actually aligning the senior hours to the agency so that we can see how many hours are done at each individual agency. Because my, my prediction is that while we have a hundred plus, a hundred and twenty or so agencies on the list, there's very few that our seniors are going to repeatedly. I don't, I don't have any data to support that because we didn't track it before, but we are tracking it now.
You don't have that data from last year's Power School?
All that was tracked was the total number of hours completed for underclass and total number of hours for senior. It, it wasn't broken down by individual agency. So our, our tech guys did a great job for us in, in making that happen for this year.
Improvements for this presentation, I looked online. And there is a calendar for service hours, but as I was looking at it for the month of March, the only thing out of it is Habitat for Humanity, do we keep that updated for students? So that they can at a glance see where they could possibly go?
Yes, we do.
So that for the entire month of March, all we have is Habitat for Humanity?
Well, any, anyone that contacts me and has an event, it goes on there. To date, that's what's on there. Now, some of these, for example, I just got a calendar yesterday's, Friday's mail, I'm losing track, for hospice, for their sale. And I would say ninety percent of the dates can't be used, they're in the morning. And so I'm not, you know, that doesn't go on there. But as people, the wrestling went on there, anyone that contacts me, it'll go on there.
Are there questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll pause for a second. Okay. Second presentation for tonight is on the Proposed Academy for Visual and Performing Arts. And we have Lou Vitello and George Gillum and Carrie Graff and Amy Federally to talk to us about this. So Lou, you're on.
Good evening, thank you for listening to our proposal this evening. About five years ago, Mr. Gillum and I were discussing, wouldn't it be great if we had a way to connect our curriculums and put our like-minded students that have a strong interest in the arts together with some type of academy or program that would further develop their skills and their artistic endeavors beyond their regular school day? So late last spring, with the blessing of the administration, we put together some curriculum days over the summer to have this presentation. And I know you've seen it at your board retreats. So we're going to do a couple of highlights as we go through this presentation and then answer some questions for it after. First thing we did was we put together our mission statement. And, you know, we stand by it. We really feel that it's a necessary component of this academy and our core values as well. We, we put together what we feel was important for our graduates of this academy to, to hold themselves up against. And, you know, we, we feel that as a student, going through our program, what you see up on that screen is going to be something that they're going to be proud of.
Next thing you'll see is some of the goals we would like, and mainly five goals we're looking at. And each of these will be color-coded underneath each slide. So when we were trying to obtain that goal, that will relate directly to that. Understanding and skill development are two really good things. We do that really well right now and we do that really well through our curriculum. Explore the career, the hands-on practice and the culture and getting kids out there into the culture of the arts are the things that the academy would really address. And this is where Lou talked about going out into the field and going out into the community and gaining these experiences.
So surrounding our mission, we have our guiding principles. A couple of things, as George mentioned earlier, we, we do well. Some things we feel we need to get better at, the expansion of technology and the broad view of culture in particular.
Students will be able to follow one of three strands or you could call them kind of pathways if you'd like. There'll be a visual arts strand, there'll be a performance arts strand. And since many of our students are mixed from both, we are making a mixed strand. And they can fulfill this through either of the curriculums. Here's a little timeline of a sophomore, a junior and a senior and what the requirements would be. Some of these requirements, it'll make more sense once we go through them a little bit. But in art credit, a practice require- but an art credit, a practice, I'm sorry, a professional requirement, seminars, career days, art awareness, extracurricular, and community service hours. The difference in the junior and senior from the sophomore is that they're going to take an additional art class, and then in the senior year, they're going to do a senior This kind of just gives you an outline of some of the art classes that are offered. The art classes that are highlighted fulfill the New York State requirement for a region's diploma, so most students take that at ninth grade level, and then the other ones would be electives. We wanted to make this very inclusive, not exclusive, so giving students a wide range of things to choose from, and leaving there's some open spots, too, that they can take other classes, so we really kind of wanted to keep their schedule open that way and give them lots of choices.
The next slide is just the performing arts strand. Once again, the highlighted courses are state ed department courses that are requirements for the arts, those do count. AP Music Theory is a senior course that is offered yearly as well. The Asterix Nestor Comprehensive Musicianship is a course that we used to teach here, hopes that maybe in the future, we get that course back. It was a prequel to the AP Music Theory course.
As I said before, here'd be a sample schedule of a ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. We just wanted to put this out there and see where there are some holes and gaps in it, so students could take other classes, other electives, that may enhance their part of being in part of this academy, or just enhance their interests, or other college interests, where a student might be interested more in science, and may want to take an anatomy class because they want to be a medical illustrator, or they may want to take a different avenue through business, and work in the museum, and taking business classes, so. But this kind of just gave the breakdown of requirements, and how you could fill other classes in.
Now, this schedule, we didn't overload students with our courses on purpose, because we really feel the crux of the program is what happens outside the regular school day that ties it together as an academy. A lot of our students are taking at least two our courses a year that we think would have an interest in being a part of this program. So one of our first events that we would do outside of the regular school day is what we're calling professional practice. The performing arts students would be required to compete or to perform an audition at either an all-state solo audition, or an all-county solo audition, so they would have to do one solo a year. The visual arts students would have to show their respective work outside the school building, one time per academic calendar year, and that would be either at a coffee shop, or it would be at a gallery, or some other venue that Mr. Gillum deems appropriate.
Just jump back, just one second. Another important thing is to have some technology built into it, and have a presence on Instagram or a website. I pushed the, my AP students this year to have Instagrams. They follow all sorts of different artists, different artists follow them, they make connections that way, they learn a lot about what's going on there. Instagram is really safe that way, that you're just putting your work out. Your work really gets out there, and your work gets seen all over the world, so they've really enjoyed that sort of thing.
Another event that we would like to do twice a year is what we're going to call seminar. And this is where students from both parts of the academy and the mixed strand students come together twice a year. One of those seminars would be focusing on visual arts, the other would be focusing on performance arts, and we would bring people from the community, professionals, to come in and speak and work with our students on various topics throughout the three-year pathway within this program.
Another thing we want to build is a career day, and I think this would be a really important thing. It would be after school, probably in the library, and we'd pool all our resources together, get as many of our friends and other colleagues we could find in the field, and have them come in and set up little tables, and students could come in and visit each of the tables, and get an experience of what is it that is available in the art field, because so many times, you see a student wants to go into the art field, or in the arts somewhat, but they go to college, and they're like, I don't know what I want to do, or what's out there. And there's so much out there to be seen. So we have some ideas how we're going to be able to pool these together, but we do want to have a career day. I think that'd be really fabulous, probably around, probably around this time in the year, where it's. Also, we have that culture part of it, where they need to have art awareness. They need to go and do an art awareness requirement, one visual and one performing, and we're, we want, even if you're a visual arts student, we want you to go to performing arts and vice versa, and it'd be one per semester, so it would be four total through the year. And we'd have these listed, we'd either have a school page for the kids, or a website, and have things available. Things that are available for the visual arts is, you know, First Fridays at the Albright, Second Fridays at the Birchfield, there's lots of regional galleries, art talks, we'd have those listed there. There's a lot of free stuff that they wouldn't have to pay for, and they can go down to art openings for the performance side.
We're extremely lucky in Western New York to have such a vibrant arts community, especially performing arts, so we have professional orchestras, students can go see, we have strong regional orchestras, colleges that are in the area that have strong art programs, as well as bringing in these performing professionals to do master classes for our students, and the same goes for the stage as well. Our theater scene is very vibrant, and we hope to incorporate that into the program as well.
For the seniors, they need to have an art practicum. This will be probably around May, and it'll kind of coincide pretty much with the art show, and the visual arts students will present their work and actually talk about their work as the art show is going on. At the same time, in the auditorium, we'd have music recitals, so other students could come, faculty, the community could come, and they could actually see what's going on, and students would have a chance to show, this is kind of like their senior show sort of idea, and what the combination of all the things they've learned through there.
We're going to require the students to participate in two extracurricular activities per school year. On the visual arts side, we have the Media Club, the National Art Honor Society, and our partners, but also on the performing arts organization side, in addition to some performing ensembles, we have the drama program, which isn't really incorporated into the coursework, but we feel this will be a good way to incorporate it into the overall arts program, and continue the package to be a whole. Students could choose from either side, so if you're a visual strand person, and you want to be a part of the makeup crew on the performing arts side, that would be something that would be fantastic to happen.
We're talking about community service again. Students are required to do eight art-related community service hours. These are not additional to the community service hours they need. This can work as piggybacking them, or double-dipping, as you could say. The extracurricular clubs, a lot of them offer community service, and I know we go out all the time with National Art Honor Society, doing all sorts of community service, and they have a lot of community service opportunities with that, so we just feel that, as Rick Brooks said, it gives the students that college-ready, that career-ready experience when you go out to be able to do those community services, working with, if you're at the senior center teaching someone how to paint, or work at the library, or wherever you might be, gives you that experience. I think it's really important to go out there and do that.
The application process is quite simple, because like we mentioned earlier, we want this to be an inclusive program, not exclusive. So any student interested during their ninth grade year, what they would do is take one of the state ed department courses that go toward the region's diploma, and once they do that, they could apply during that freshman year. We'll, you know, if the student has a strong interest, and they took care of that coursework in good standing, they're going to be a part of the program. We talked about what would happen if a student transferred into the school district after their freshman year, and we have a way to make it work out, so if they come as a sophomore, that would be something doable, but beyond that, it would be too difficult to make up the coursework to complete the academy.
We are going to make some, make an enrichment liaison group, and we're going to pool some people together. I already have Lindsey Krantz from the Albright going on this group, and Lou can get somebody from the BPO, and these are the types of people that we can pull, and we can get hopefully things for career days coming in for it, community service opportunities here for it, more of a whole group that gives us ideas, and helps us reach out to the community, and finds those professionals, and makes those connections. So we've already been thinking about that, and these are the kind of people we would want on that liaison group.
So the last couple slides, the people that worked on this committee are listed up there, and I would also like to thank Kristin Overhold and her team, they helped us tremendously, especially during a developmental day in the fall, to put this presentation together, and their assistance with this is invaluable, so thank you very much. And as we were introduced earlier, that is the staff, and then the final slide are just some items that we would, we'd like to have to make this program go forward. We both felt that it would be necessary, with the amount of time as a director in this, to request a Level VII stipend. We figured out time into it lines up pretty well with what's on that list of advisors, as well as an operating budget of around $2,500 for things like the career day, seminars, senior arts practicum, and graduation. We'd like the graduates of the program to wear a cord at graduation, and have an embossing on their diploma, or a seal of some sort, to show that they earned their way through the program. And just long-term needs, you know, if, as the program grows, and hopefully it will, we'd like to have some additional staffing to reinstate the courses that aren't currently being taught, that have been taught in the past. So at that point, please fire away with any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you considered adding a business class to this? I see a lot of artists, they graduate college, they want market themselves, and they don't have the skills in business to do that, and I know I talked to Kristin about that earlier.
Yeah, absolutely. We were thinking, because the way we left the schedule open-ended, especially the senior year with four slots beyond what their normal course load would be, that we would encourage students to take business classes, as well as the half-year drama course that is offered typically once every other year, and so on, to explore those opportunities.
I mean, I just, from my personal opinion, I do see that as a requirement. If you're going to be in this program, you're required to take a class, kind of a business class, to help you out, instead of more just, you know, it's a suggestion, more of a requirement. That's my personal feeling, I know the board feels.
We did try to keep it, again, open, because the art field is so open, for someone that would want to go into an architecture program, and they still want to go into this, they may run into a lot of, go into a lot of tech classes, too. Definitely think the business class would be a highly recommended class to take through that, and there's also writing classes that, the English classes is teaching for drama, which would be another excellent suggestion for them. Trying to make Project Lead the Way stuff, and again, trying to keep it really inclusive and not exclusive, was really one of our concerns, because once the students start filling up their schedule, they start running into problems of, oh, I can't take this class, or I can't take this class. So we were trying to keep it open to more of their needs, but suggestion well taken also.
A few slides back, you have the enrichment liaisons, and the six different groups. Would they meet together as a board, or just would it happen if they're actually-
Yes, we would like to meet together at least once a year with that grouping of people to plan the year. We're thinking more of a summer meeting for that group to go together, and then as a need-be basis throughout the year as well.
Would this start with, like, next year's freshmen, that will apply, like sophomore year?
That's our plan. So next year's freshman would be the group that would apply, the following year is when we would start the sophomore class, and then each subsequent year would be the new class added in. Correct?
Do you plan on doing, like, a parents informational night to get, like, the word out, so like, if a freshman, I mean, I don't know, do all freshmen take an art or music? I mean, so, because if they don't, then it disqualifies them.
There is a requirement for region's diploma to get at least one year of an arts credit, but that could be anywhere within their schedule.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, are you going to, are you going to have, like, a parent's-
Correct, yes. So what we'll do is we'll incorporate them into the eighth grade open house program, and as well as the freshman orientation program.
Obviously, you talked about the benefits of kind of the additional, the career, the practice, and the culture aspects. So we have students that are heavily immersed in this curriculum today. Can you size up, how many students are we talking about? I mean, the number of students that we have today, how do you envision that going forward?
We were looking at, and I'll speak from my end of it, and then Mr. Gillum, we'll speak toward his, around 10 to 15 per class per year. Now, there might be some that are in that mixed arts strand that are within both, but I think we feel that's manageable, and with our current staffing, we could handle that well.
That'd be about the same for me, about 10 to 15, that's what we were talking earlier. Again, there are some kids that are mixed between, so it's always kind of a tough thing to anticipate.
So the program's only writing with four years of 30, I mean, it could be 100 to 120.
Correct.
So, I mean, I think that this is a clever way of doing it. I mean, I realize that we're not, you know, throwing tons of new resources at this, and it's a combination of packaging up things that, you know, we're paving the cow path, as it were, you know, a lot of students are doing pieces of this, but then augmenting in clever ways, so I think that that's a really good approach. And the, you know, the awareness, I think it was, you know, the cultural elements, I mean, I see a lot of the work that you're talking about doing, I mean, that's pretty common in the college coursework that I've seen, so, you know, having that sort of, you know, go to, go to different performances, and then write about it, or talk about it, I think that that's a really good place to go as well, so. Great.
I'd just like to thank you for putting together all of you such a great presentation. I think it's a terrific idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may ask one question of you, Dr. X. So obviously, this is information for us.
Correct.
We, you know, based on the cycle, we wouldn't necessarily have a formal program starting September, but we need to start things along the pathway.
Correct.
At what point do we need, as a board, to kind of throw our weight and support behind this?
I'd say by the June meeting.
Okay.
And then, as far as community service, perhaps a meeting before then, by May, in terms of any other changes you'd like to see in that particular program.
Okay.
So that concludes the superintendent's report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
So for the financial reports, it's not too much as we move on at this stage of the year. Arkery County is a new name you'll see on there, since Heritage Center, a lot of our specialized placements changed their name officially. Again, I like to look at the fuel, it's a huge cost, and it's still well below our budget parameters, and I did give you a little more information about the lifts at the bus garage that will look later on in the year, possibly through free purchase funds to take care of. Should I just continue?
Yeah, if you want to run through all of your agenda items.
Sure. Next is the annual budget hearing notice. As you know, the vote this year is May 15th, and that is state mandated. The budget hearing has some flexibility. Typically, we do it the Monday, the week before, and the Monday prior to the vote, so this year, it would be May 7th, here at the high school at 7 o'clock, and then after that would be the normal board meeting. This notice has to be published in the paper. It also puts in the proposal for $935,000 for 10 vehicles for transportation, and it also lists the two board seats, Mr. Fuchs and Mr. Priory, who are up for reelection. The next item is the Ledgeview roadway. I've given you information on that prior to this, but it was after the last board meeting. So while the amount of the repair does fall under the public works amount that we have to bid, I'm still asking for board approval on it. This way, we're going to try to still get some aid on it, and if not, it may be an insurance recovery. We're not sure, NYSER is not sure if this is a coverable item or not. Next item is the capital project bonding. So the capital project of $32,895,000, if you remember, $3 million of that was from our fund balance. The balance of $29,895,000 then has to get paid from borrowings. We have paid 1.15 million of that right now. We have paid $1.15 million of that right now throughout the last years of bond anticipation notes, and this June, we'll be looking to bond over approximately 14 years, the remaining balance of $28,780,000. Dormitory Authority of State of New York will negotiate the rates. A nice thing about going with the dormitory authority is then whatever interest they have is basically always aided at the state-adeable rate. Subsequent to the actual bonding in June, there'll be a day when we'll ask Mr. Fuchs to come in and sign about 500 pieces of paper.
Figure out my mortgage.
Last item we have are two new high school clubs that they would like to get started, the Empower Club and the Unified Club. So, I gave you some information on those clubs. At this point in time, they're not asking for any paid advisors, but they will, with your approval, will set up accounts for them, and Mr. Smith can get those clubs off the ground. Typically, that's what happens with the new club, is if there's a lot of interest, which as you could see from these sheets, there is a lot of interest for these clubs, we get them going. Depending on the nature of the club and how it takes off down the road, there may be some paid advisors that would be recommended, but not at this time. And that's it.
Any questions on the financial items? Just to reinforce, relative to the annual budget hearing notification, again, you've said this every year, but I'm going to ask again, like the bus purchase and so forth, all those are non-binding, but you have to have it out there.
Yes, it's a permissive resolution, so it's a non-binding resolution. You, when you actually approve the budget in April, could pull that if you want to. Even when it goes to the community to vote, then subsequent to that vote, at the June meeting, most likely, we'll ask you to approve the borrowing, and at that time, we would let out purchase orders.
No questions on items F1 to F6? Can I get a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Patak?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. Before you have a number of items this evening, beginning with, I'm pleased to say that we have a tentative agreement with the Clarence teachers. It's a three-year successor agreement running from July 1st to 18th through June 30th, 2021. And as you might expect and as you are aware, generally, the major drivers of negotiations are salary and benefits. And this contract would provide for additional money on each of the steps of the salary schedule. In the first year of the contract, each step would receive $200, steps on steps one through 20, $150 in years two and three on steps one through 20, and the top step, step 21, would receive $1,500 in each of the three years of the contract, and that amounts to about 1.5% of an increase on that top step. In regard to health insurance, currently, an employee contributes 12% of the premium. In each of the three years, the premium would increase, or the contribution toward the premium would increase by one-half percent. So, it'd be 12 and 1/2 in the first year, 13% in the second year, and 13 and 1/2% in the third year. We also receive concessions on prescription drugs. Tier-three drugs will increase in costs from $35 to $45 for a 30-day supply. And we also have increased cost for emergency room visit from $75 to $150, and inpatient hospital stay from $100 to $150. And those are the major, major financial components to the contract. Also on the agenda this evening, you have resignations. You have 22 resignations for the purposes of retirement. You have appointments, specifically an unpaid coach here at the high school, TCI training, math and ELA tutoring services. We have the semi-annual adjustment of teacher salaries, and as you can see, there's one for certification purposes, and others are for purposes of skill enhancement. There's presentation compensation, as well as additions to the substitute list.
Is there any questions on P1 to P6? I guess, before we vote, I guess I'd just like to acknowledge all those teachers that did tender their resignation for retirement purposes. Just quick math going through, over 600 years of service to the district, so a lot of experience is being lost. Can I get a motion to approve P1 to P6?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Non-instructional?
Non-instructional, you have resignations. Two are for the purposes of retirement, and you also have two appointments.
Any questions on items P7 to P8? Can I get a motion?
Send up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Dr. X, special needs and student activities? 12 preschool and 79 school-age meetings. This is the beginning of the busy season. Nothing out of the ordinary. Can I get a motion to approve S1 and S2?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's carried. Under board development, we have state competition? Right. This is our Future Business Leaders of America Club. We have two advisors, Brian Schmidt and Jen Shiffo, and this is a competition where the kids go to Binghamton, stay overnight, and have a future FBLA cool thing.
That's a qualifying trip, is it not? Do they have to qualify to be able to attend?
Yes, they did, yes.
Very nice.
Do you want to vote for each one individually? Oh, you want me to do the rest? The second is the school calendar for next year with all the dates and times and vacations in there. And then, third, if the board so desired, you could nominate anyone for the BOSI's Board of Education. You don't have to, but if you had a desire to, you have to do it tonight. And just on that topic, that is, any, any local board that would nominate anybody would go on the agenda or on the ballot for April 17th, which we would then vote on. Correct. I don't know if anybody has any interest to nominate anyone relative to the BOSI's Board. I haven't heard any interest thus far from... I think we'll pass on that for this evening. We do need a motion for B1 and B2 for the field trip and/or the state competition, as well as the 18, 19 school calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's carried. All right. We are at the second public comment session for this evening. If anyone has anything to add?
Hi there. Mitchell Snyder, former Clarence student. I was sitting back there listening to the community service talk, and I was able to pull up on my phone the, I actually think it was a large conversation about the youth bureau. So, I was able to look up at my phone, and the fact is, every single event that the youth bureau hosts, that people go and volunteer for, they're volunteering through the youth bureau. So, to exclude certain events on the grounds of the individual organizations is kind of circular, in that we approve them because the youth bureau in the town of Clarence certifies their safety, but you don't do it in the case of certain organizations that you cherry pick off a list. That itself is nonsensical. But the other thing that I'm more concerned about specifically with that is when I was looking through the committee that was used to determine that recommendation, not a single one of the 140 agencies had a representative on that committee. Mr. Brooks, I don't know where he went, but he told you himself that agencies are about half the battle. Without agencies, we don't have any place for students to volunteer. How you get agencies to sign up, how you get agencies to participate, that's 50% of the battle, and not a single agency was consulted in that recommendation. Any intro-to-public policy student could tell you, every single stakeholder needs to be considered, and every single stakeholder needs to be heard, but they weren't even consulted once. He was asked if the youth bureau was involved, but he said, "Well, no, we have 140 different participants." Not a single one was. The recommendation cannot be fully valid if you haven't listened to at least one of the agency providers.
Any other comments?
I just wondered, what was the timeline of the let you drive?
The driveway?
The materials are there, so I was going to figure out when it's done and how long it takes. It's about a week job. They're going to try to start it right before the break, the April break, and try to have it done. One of the things that was holding it up is the asphalt farms don't really lay asphalt until about that time. So, we're hoping that a week will actually fix the culvert and actually repave the driveway. Again, if not, we, we know we have that other entrance if we're a day or two late, but that's why we want to get it started as early as we can, just before the April break, and hopefully that week could be all done.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so in our packets, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings and events. The next board meeting is on Monday, March 26th at 7:00 here in the lecture hall. That'll be our third budget study session, followed by the next regular board meeting on April 16th. No other questions or comments from the board? I'll need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the potential discipline of a particular employee.
So, move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.